Being 6:59.
Being 6:59, in seconds. I'm going to call as a Dunbaran Board of Selectmen meeting back to order. We had met earlier at 6:30 with the Board of Assessors to go into a non-public session to talk about assessing issues. And so we're going to restart the regular Board of Selectmen meeting now. I have all three selectmen present. The town administrator is present. We got a secretary is present. According for the citizens of Dunbaran is Mr. Leo Martel. Thank you, Leo. And we also have in the committee, in the audience, we have a town official, we have a...
Don.
Don Larson, who's a cemetery trustee, and also a town official, official town per-...
Perambulator.
Perambulator.
Spell that.
No. Okay, I have two sets of minutes, gentlemen.
Motion to approve the regular minutes of the September 19th meeting. I'll second Bob's motion.
Any discussion on those minutes, gentlemen?
Very good job.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion for the non-public meeting minutes of September 19th. Clear time on those minutes?
7:45, 7:54 PM.
Second.
Any discussion on those, gentlemen?
Nope, very good.
Question is, that involves a lawsuit in the town, and I think we should seal those, gentlemen. I don't think we did last night. I'll just...
How much detail, please?
Yeah, there's dollar figures and all that kind of stuff in that paper. I have to say, I've got a second opinion here.
I'll make a motion, we'll seal them as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So these will be sealed in?
Okay.
All okay? Of the minutes? No, of the minutes.
Oh, the minutes?
Aye, okay. Okay, we need a knife.
I didn't say it, I was just quiet.
Okay. Let you guys wrangle that over there. Okay. Okay, I'm going to open up for a public comment. I'll start with Leo, anything?
Nothing at this time.
You're on, John, you're on the...
I got public comment.
Okay, very good, sir.
Oh, all right. The Garden Club...
John Larson from the Garden Club.
Garden Club this time. We're getting all set up at Page's Corner for the mow sale coming up this weekend. We've got 1,700 mows and assorted flowers coming that will be up there for sale. They'll be delivered tomorrow, and we're going to start selling tomorrow and that, but it's actually Saturday, Sunday are the two dates that we'll be doing. So please come by, bring lots of money, be four for mows for 20 bucks. Heck of a deal.
Four for 20.
Four for 20, and we've got some great big ones also that are a little bit more. But we also have a Patriot's red, white, and blue mows too, so.
Four for 21.
We have a lot of them there. And that's basically what I have for a public comment right now.
Sir, right.
Fred Mullin, on September 21st at 9 o'clock in the morning, Jeff Trexler and myself met with the Bow Selectmen, Mike Wayne, to perambulate the town line between Dunbaran and Bow from Hooksett to Hawkinson. And we found them all, we repainted, I found, except one. We took and repainted all the engravings, and there's a couple of those that were engraved 1879.
Wow.
It's pretty unique, you know. But on Guile Hill Road, this, I get part of a survey plot that was done by surveyor H.B. Fosher, F-O-S-H-E-R, and it says, "On July 6th, 1968, there was a stone mound marked DB at this location. About two feet northwest of the stone is a birch tree also marked. On August 10th, 1970, it was found that the stone mound had been removed. A nail stake was later placed where the stone had been removed using the ties taken from July 1968. The distance and angle shown here are to the stone mound before this was removed." So, and, so there's no bound on Guile Hill Road. Now, in 2007, the town bought land, I think it was still Mrs. Chan that lived there, to make a turnaround, and the surveyor then had put four-by-four granite bounds in. Where it comes online, they've got a big boulder there, and they put a drill hole there right online. So that's what we use as for the Guile Hill Road. Now, according to my measurements from 1944, they had so many feet from one bound to another, and also from the bound taken at, the stone bound marked in 2007, the Dunbaran Bow bound should be 50 feet north of that stone. And so Mike Wayne from Bow says that we ought to replace the marker. And I says, "Well, we've done that before, with Lockstone, we replaced a couple of them." And I says, "But you bring it to your board, and I'll bring it to our board and see what they want to do with it." Now, to, for my regulation, for what they have to do to go back to a bound on each side that's at least 50 years old.
Okay.
So the one in the corner behind, I think it's 48 Brown Hill Road, that goes back to about the 1800s. And down at, the one on Putney Road has been replaced, not replaced, but, excuse me, the one on Grapevine Road has been replaced around 1984. So that wouldn't cut to 50 years. The next one down would be on Clinton Street, and that's a rock there, it's engraved DB. And also, this is the first time it was ever been found, the summer just right, it was thinly engraved on the roadside, 1879. So they might have to go, those two bounds to tie in to find out what this is.
Will it require a surveyor to do this?
Yes, yes, it has to be a surveyor to do it, yeah. And what happened when we did it with Lockstone, maybe four or five years ago, each towns split the cost, and there was two bounds replaced. And they had to go back almost to the corner of where, to, I think, Mount Unronable to tie that in.
I would be in consensus to split the cost when we get the correct bound imposed.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. I think we're all in consensus of it.
Or make a motion, Mike?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we split the cost of replacing the lost bounds on Guile Hill Road as described, with the town of Bow.
Per their agreement to split the cost?
Per their agreement, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they haven't agreed to this yet. He's going to bring it back to their selectmen.
Right. So you can, as far as we... We were in favor, so that's one thing you can take to them to the table.
Yeah, so...
As soon as we go on it.
Yeah.
Second.
So what we did in the past is we contacted a couple of surveyors that were willing to do that, to reset the bounds. We got one out of Concord.
Yeah.
And then we got a quote from them, and that's what we came back to the board with on both sides, and then both towns agreed to split it, so.
Well, I think conceptually, we're in favor. We need to see the amount, so. Conceptually, I like the amount. Are we all in favor?
Yep.
All right, okay. In favor, but the thing is that...
One question about that, if they have any, want to get any information, the perambulation, I last Monday brought it to Secretary of State's office, so they get the copy there. And I put a copy in our town's loosely folder, the Bow has a copy. And they can use this if they want. This is only partial, but...
Okay. Can you oversee that? I'm asking, just as a, can you oversee that?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you have any suggestions? I put right now, I have a conflict of interest between Richard Battle and myself, because my son is vice president of the company. But that was the company that they had before, because to recommendation, there was no other surveyor that wanted to do the job at the time.
I think as long as you make some where the conflict, I don't think there's an issue there.
All right, and if we get more than, we'd like to get at least open to bids, and the bid is reasonable, we take into consideration that it shouldn't be an issue. But thank you for bringing it to the attention of the board.
Is Jack back in business?
He is back in business, so he could also bid on it.
Okay, because I haven't seen him or else I don't know if he's...
Lean, can you go ahead and give...
Check with those two companies?
Yes. And the thing is, I'm wondering more about...
Why don't we wait till you're back for Bow and make sure that you're in consensus, and then we'll...
Well, Bow may have the one question.
They might contact companies themselves.
Right.
Sometimes though, they have, the surveyor will have an hourly charge and a cost per monument, so it doesn't get really expensive, especially when you have other bounds to tie into the one that's missing.
As I recall, just working on bounds and the zoning, I mean, it's only but the planning board, just putting one, one bound in is not terribly expensive, it's a couple hundred dollars.
Typically, but they're going to go quite a distance further.
That's the only thing, yes.
Right, I think last year, that last time was what, 1,700 something for us?
I think so, yeah.
And then 1,700 for the others.
Oh, was that high?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because like I said, they're going to go back so, well, that was two bounds.
Yeah.
Online, so they had to go back so far to at least find bounds, at least 50 years old.
Okay. Well, why don't we just...
We can still get quotes.
Get quotes and just start working the quotes, and then we can, if you want to share with Bow that we are in favor of it.
Okay.
And split the cost, we can do that. And we'll go from there, we're just away from Bow.
Do you want to reach out to those two companies? Do you want me to?
I can, absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great.
Lean, if you could just hit the town administrator and Bow. Just, Tom, we've got a proposal on the table, it's been approved by us, but we need approval by them before we commit. Great job, sir, thank you.
Welcome. That's what gets the big bucks for.
Absolutely. Okay, I'm going to close public comment, and back to the board. And now, Don, you're up again.
Well...
This part, we're going to talk about money. Do we have a save of a hundred dollars?
Yeah, $10 for Reefs Across Dunbaran. We're going to be ordering, I ordered the 200 reefs the other day, they're holding the price of 575 each, and we'll pick them up a couple of days in advance, put all the bows on them and everything, so we'll be ready to go on December 14th. We've got the honored guard from Sons of American Revolution in New Hampshire, I'll be here again, along with General John Stark. So we'll have quite a ceremony, and we've got more people, you know, once again, responding to volunteer help put on, do the reefs, so.
It's the actor we're talking about?
Huh?
The actor, General.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Richard Wright. Yeah. So, the way we set it up is that his is the first Saturday in Tilton, or, I think it's Tilton, not Tilton, but over on the west side here in his community, and then we do ours the second Saturday, and then Reefs Across America does, there's the third Saturday. So that way, we can participate in each other's.
Very good.
So...
Okay, then, per our estate, 31:95 down P, Roman number three, paragraph P, I make a motion to accept donation in the amount of $10 for the Reefs Across Dunbaran. Do we have the check, Lean?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Okay, Lean, talk to us about the spreadsheets.
Okay, so such...
What we're talking about is the third quarter expenses in American School of Public.
As we've done in the past, I typically try to run a quarterly expense report and quarterly revenues. If you want to go to the revenues real quick, this is the largest font that could go with data without going to a lot of long pages. Bottom line, to go to the last page, we have a current year budget of $1,9129,314. Our current year to date revenues came, is currently at 824,676.
Very good.
On the very last page, column third from the right. So current year budget, and then current year revenues to date. Some of the big ticket items that are still outstanding would be the rooms and meals. We had budgeted $135,000. I think that number there is what's holding up setting the tax rate, because they do have everything they need from the town, the school, the county, and the state school.
Will they get directly with the state, will provide them the information?
They will provide that to me, then I'll notify the board that we're ready to set the taxes.
Okay, that's imminent, I take it?
Yeah. Another high-ticket item is the fourth quarter highway block grant, that we do know, we have confirmation of that number there. The flood control, one had done some, the MS-1 numbers with the DRA, she gave me an estimate of around 72,000 that would be added. Of course, it's not in the computer yet, because we don't enter it until we see it hit the bank. And then we have technically about three months of the town clerk's revenues. I just posted her September revenues. They've been well over 55,000, but just for round numbers, that's coming in at 165, so I feel confident that we still have a good solid 403,700 outstanding. And you can see from the second column to the right, we have outstanding 304,637. So we should be looking really good for our projected revenues, and what that basically means is that whatever we collect in addition to what we've budgeted will increase our surplus.
The police special duties all come at the end of the year?
Well, that, in that area, there's two counts that don't get represented in our revenues. The police officer wage goes directly towards the payroll of the police officer, and then the vehicle capital reserve that has been authorized is put into a liability account, and that money gets transferred into their capital reserve fund. That's actually kind of capital reserve, it's a special fund that's held by the treasurer. The only thing that is represented in these is the administrative fee for special duty, and that it's kind, most of it is a wash. It does cover insurance, social security, other costs associated with dispersing that payroll. And that one is on, I think that's on the federal.
The income, page three, it should be it.
Yeah, it would be the second to last line on page three, special duty admin. So this year, we have collected 19,462. There is some of that that is utilized for expenses on the other side of our day-to-day expenses.
Is that up or down from last year, just out of curiosity?
Prior year was 13,718. We collected, this year we collect to date 19,462.
I remember we raised the rate, was it?
It looks like you're working.
I'm happy with that. I think it's when the chief comes for a new vehicle, there's a money that's come.
Well, somebody said Joe wasn't in the area.
You should know, is this about right? Right on that corner.
Okay. Okay, let's talk about expenses now.
Okay, third quarter expenses. You're well aware of your numbers that you look at from your sign off on your expenses and your manifests. At this point, most of these departments should be at a minimum of 25%.
The fire department always comes in at the end with a bunch.
Correct, yeah. So I think the only one that's kind of looking a little bit low is personnel administration. I think some of that has to do with the excess special duty that we're paying. Again, we're collecting on the revenue side, so there is a wash, a little bit of a wash there that offsets where we currently are, but then, and the monthly bills, like dental, health, disability, social security, a lot of that is paid in advance, so I know that we're probably down to November, December payments for the social security, Medicare, retirement, that type of thing.
Okay.
No surprise.
I think we're all, we're looking pretty good on most of, most everything.
Okay, thank you.
Bottom line is 34%.
Thank you, Lean. Gentlemen, any questions on the budget or the income?
No, that looks good. Thank you, Lean.
No questions?
Thank you.
Don, you're up.
Appreciate the update on budgets.
You're up again.
Hi.
You know, this must be serious you're coming up.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you guys for having the budget, so much in If you noticed on page three of the report, the cemetery meeting there, we're at 48% of budget, but that's soon to be deleted, and that because of our Page's Corner project, we accumulated some money there. But the road is just about done. As you can see there, that, you know, from the photograph, that we've got it pretty well under control there. I drove over it today, and that's hard pack that will settle down, especially if we get some rain and stuff like that, so. It's in real good shape. The bid came, it was for 13,5, came in at 13,5, plus we did two parking areas on the south end where people can turn around, or we can park a car there, whatever the case may be, but we put hard pack there also. And even with that addition, it was able to come in on budget. So Jeff did a good job.
Where'd they haul all the luma over there?
Huh?
Where'd they haul all that luma?
Ah, he took it, he hauled it off on his own.
He did okay.
Yeah. He, that was part of the deal, that he'd haul it off if he could have it. And I didn't want it. And so, you know, that saved us several thousand dollars there in hauling fees, so. But as you can see, they put down, we had to put down the cloth underneath it there, which will give us many more years of good use on that road. And, you know, he took his time, got it right, the parking area on the north end, the first picture there in upper left, and that way, that came out real well, and once again, that is, people travel on it, it'll be. But now we've got, you know, people know where to drive when they go in there, because it's all grass. And next year, we hope to finish the other two driveways going down through, and that'll complete it. But...
When you say finish, does that have to be essentially a similar type work, or is it less work involved?
It'd be a less cost than that, because they're just straight across and that, but that way, you know, it's defined, and then there's a walkway that goes down through the middle of it also. And what we're doing, I finally got a bid for the Cremains Garden. And it, as I talked to different people, it evolved, and I was going to look at, you know, putting in aluminum and concrete and stuff like that, but it rolls like that. So when I met with Brian Faulkner, landscaping and irrigation, Brian says, "You want to put cobblestones on side by side," and that made a lot of sense, because they're about a foot long, and it goes, you know, it can go with the road, you know, the roll of the ground. And so by doing that, you know, dig out the middle, put in hard pack, three, four-inch hard pack, why, the bid came in at $8,200. So between the $8,200, that we've got, right now, we've got $7,618 that we haven't spent. I've got $1,834 that we'll have to pay out for landscaping with ASP. We got $600 there, I call it brush removing or whatever. But the nice thing about it is, is that the owner, Don, I called him like once a week for three weeks, and he never got back to me in regards to the brush clearing. We had that eradicated with invasive weed control, and he said he would come in and clear it out. And he didn't get back to me, so he's coming out next week, and he's going to do it at no charge for the first hour or so, you know, and if it's real close, why he won't charge us at all, just because he hadn't gotten back to me on the phone, so I didn't argue.
So they're going to use Roundup?
Huh?
No.
So, and he also told me a couple of weeks ago, when he was out there mowing, that his wife, who did the bid and everything, grossly underbid it, you know, for what was involved in that. But they're doing an excellent job. He says, you know, that's nothing on there, so we got a two-year contract with them at this price, so $3,000 a year, so that's, that's great, but...
How often do they come out in the summer? How often do they come out in the summer to the mall?
Yeah.
How often, weekly?
I would say about every, twice a month, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah. And it depends on, you know, initially, we got off to a little rocky stage, but, you know, squeaky wheel, but now they're staying on top of it. I think they're looking good. We've been getting a lot of comments on it, so I think we got a good company.
So it's $8,000 for all the cemeteries?
Yeah.
And that's, so we have the one over here.
East, east, center, Page's Corner.
And, so going through the rest of your expenses here, I think you're trying to break for us.
Yeah, so then we've got training for Judy and I on the ninth with the New Hampshire Cemetery Association, and that leaves 500, or 5124 in our budget. The expendable trust fund, we've got 8291 in there to draw from, and then the encumbered funds that we did last year for the Page's Road, causeage material in that, 6825, that leaves us 20,440. The Page's Corner, 13,000, that leaves us a balance of 6940. And the Cremains Garden, to finish that, is $8,200 is a bid from J&amp;J, so we're using a local contractor, and I mean, I've got a list of contractors that I've tried to get out there, including the one that you recommended. And, but so, we're $1,260 upside down.
Sure.
And, you know, I need basically, we've got the new signs, the hardware on that is with sandblasted and primer, that'll be 50 or a hundred dollars, you know, a couple bucks here or there, but I need additional funds this year if possible. And the one thing that we're doing is, we have a perpetual care trust fund, and we can't touch the principal of it, but we can touch the interest, but we have to figure out a formula. There's a formula that, you know, the total number of graves, the cost of the landscaping and maintenance on them, and you divide that, and then we've got 479 perpetual care graves in there, and so you take that time, whatever the fee is for each individual, and, you know, their landscaping divided by it. Next year, it'll be $8,000, so it'll be a little higher figure. And so that'll bring in $980 plus or minus to the general fund this year, and we'll have that done this month, in the month of October. So, you know, we're bringing money back to the town. All I ask is that you let me, give me permission to finish the projects this year that we got started.
So, the amount you're asking is really an additional 1,500 for operating by this point?
Yeah, but I just want to give you a heads up in case something, emergency comes up that we don't, but we're pretty much covered on everything else.
Now, I'm kind of seeing, you're upside down on the J&amp;J landscape and quote by 1260.
From what I have to work with.
Right, and then the cemetery trustees would like to ask the board to select one for additional 1,500 to complete the projects, include the hardware for new signs and cemeteries.
Right.
You've got a few dollars in hardware there, so that's why you're running at 1,500?
Yeah.
And then what's this showing, this 800 on the front page here?
That one was advised on page two, to reflect the new numbers that he just gave you.
Okay, I see that, see advised, what, six of them? Bobby, comments? I'm going to ask you one of the, is J&amp;J prepared to do this entire job this year, or are they going to move something to next year?
This year. No, we're going to do it this year.
You have a contract with them for this year?
No, I haven't, I haven't done it yet.
He's got an estimate to go forward.
I want to, I got to make sure the money's there.
And they've said they would be able to do it this year?
Yeah, yeah, he can get us started. See, we're not pouring concrete or anything like that, so we can, you know, put it in there. And he's got a machine that'll, that's 36 inches, so we just cut that aisle.
That's all right.
That we need to do to remove the turf.
Okay.
And haul it all the way, putting down anti-weed material and stuff like that, so it's, it's pretty good. Now, another way, I think you might have seen... Now, another way, I think you might have seen this, is I wanna raffle off our old signs. Donna Dunn already wants to buy one, I said, well, you'll have to contact the person that wins the raffle.
She's gonna, she's gonna buy more tickets, that's all.
That's fine too, you know, so that'll be cheaper than trying to buy the sign probably. But the, the whole point is, is that I'd like to be able to promote this and have three canisters so people can decide which sign they wanna do it. And have it here at the town office about three, four weeks ahead of time, so that we can get as much revenue out of it as possible, which would all go to the cremains garden.
I don't have any problem with that. When are you gonna do that with the signs?
The old signs?
Yeah.
Uh, well, just raffle them off.
No, wait, it's a timeframe, timeframe.
Oh, before town meeting?
Okay, so that's correct.
So, so basically the month of February. You know, leading up to it.
Will the cremains garden be done at that point?
Well, I got to do signs in my garage.
Nope, you're not following me. You're gonna sell the old signs? You said you wanna put the money towards the cremains garden?
Right.
It will actually be done by that point?
It'll be done, but I've got Pages Corner to do yet.
Oh, okay, you have another corner to do the cremains garden, okay.
So, no, I've.
I was unsure what cremains garden you were talking about.
So basically, what he's saying there, by selling that, he'll be recouping some revenue for sale of town. And you guys have the option of either letting it go into the general fund or earmarking it?
I know, I just didn't wanna put it towards a cremains garden that was paid for.
No.
Follow me?
Yep.
I didn't realize we were doing a second cremains garden.
I've got a bigger one up there.
You do, okay.
And, and nothing else, depending, you know, you know, we got that walkway and that, so maybe I can do the both of them together or something, you know. So it's just, we're, we're just, you know, once again, trying to make it easier for people to find their loved ones and stuff like this, and have access and know where to drive, and where not to drive.
Okay, well, have anything else?
No.
I think we're, I, I'm in favor of, the thing is, we, we have enough dollars in our maintenance that we could.
Correct, so the way you would wanna do it is, is give them the approval to overspend their operating budget by that number of dollars. So that when I'm reporting it in the town report, it's gonna show that they're in, they've overspent, but they have valid, they can write it in their reports as to all the projects they have done in this calendar year. And I'm sure a lot of people will notice it, just even without, but you have the authority to say yes, go ahead with your projects there.
I don't really have a problem with that. Have you looked at next year's budget yet and what you're planning on?
The next year's budget, how mu- how much dollars?
Oh, have, I'm gonna try to keep it the same.
Okay.
You know, so.
That's a good answer.
We like this.
But keep in mind, it's three, four years ago.
But I'm also, you know, that's the reason I'm doing the auction, is because that will give me extra revenue up and above the budget, so. And the other thing we're looking at doing is, right now, a plot out here is four hundred dollars, it's three hundred in Pages Corner. I'd like to be able to raise the price to four hundred dollars for both cemeteries, so we're on the same page.
That one's full east?
Huh?
East, east is full.
East is full, yeah, that's closed, that's a closed cemetery. Except for people that already have a plot there, you know, most of those are family plots. But.
Can I ask you a question? How come there were no perpetual cares in these other two cemeteries?
Because you gave us the budget now to take care of the mowing.
Oh, okay.
That was done before my time. So I think it was like nineteen thirteen, or two thirteen, or one thirteen.
So I've given them the direction of how to spend down the perpetual care. Right now, they're only entitled to touch the interest and not the principal, but in order to get to the principal, they have to spend down. And the previous boards before them, the trustees before them, were negligent in requesting and calculating that expense and withdrawing money. So their goal now is to withdraw all the interest on the next few years, get it down to.
Who's paying that perpetual care, is what I'm thinking?
Oh, the people who are lending it.
We are right now, because whether we take care of a regular law, uh, grave, perpetual care is mixed in with there, where it's our obligation to.
So it comes out of the town budget and whatever.
Down to town budget right now. So they're doing their, their job by reaching out and getting that revenue back into your fund.
I just wanted to be clear whether perpetual care was done from the town, or if it was people donating to the perpetual care of that cemetery.
Technically, it was originally, but we haven't touched it, but they have the mechanism to withdraw from it, so now they're gonna start to do that.
Yeah, 'cause actually, your perpetual care is the interest of the money that went into perpetual care.
Correct.
We do, no, do we, do we, do we collect any money for perpetual care, is it an option anymore?
No, that's completely closed, we can spend down the interest that it's earning through the trustee of the trust funds. And then after that, they have to petition side pray through the trustee of.
And so you have nothing in place for these newer cemeteries for perpetual care after they're pulled or removed?
Correct, just town budget.
At Pages Corner, the ones on the south, or east side of the cemetery, there are probably some perpetual cares in there, 'cause, you know, we have that. 'Cause those were the old graves and that, but they stopped it in, what, eighty-four or?
Yeah, they just stopped withdrawing the money.
Yeah, withdrawing, in other words, that's when the town allowed the budget for the mowing and stuff like that. And so that money just been sitting there, and the interest has been building.
Very small.
And so the formula that I have, I think, on the sheet there.
Yep, you didn't have it.
That shows how we have to go about getting it. And we, we started, the wheels turning, but we're trying to get an accurate figure in that. And so there's four hundred and seventy-nine perpetual care people that donated in there. And then you, you find out what your cost, last year, our cost for mowing was fifty-nine hundred dollars and change, because he, he just stopped coming. And so that's how come we replaced him. New one is eight thousand, so you take, find out the formula of all the graves, in this case, twenty-nine hundred and seventy-nine, or seventy-nine graves. Why, you divide that into the cost of your mowing and landscape, and I wanna find out about, about the tombstone repair, that could be counted also?
I don't believe so.
Because that was a warrant article.
That, that's specific and earmarked for that expense, yeah. And that laps, that lapses in twenty-twenty, December.
So.
So I, the, the way I see this, just using the dollars, the generate, interest dollars generated in the perpetual care fund to offset your general maintenance.
Right.
Right, right.
But that'll, that'll help bring money into our budget also.
So. I also wanna point out that three or four years ago, the cemetery trustees approached the town to create a capital reserve fund for the sale of the right-to-intervene graves in our cemeteries. Since that began, we have accumulated nine, over nine thousand dollars in that fund. Of this year's budget, they are authorized to withdraw, he's going to withdraw eighty-four hundred, so technically, the town's giving him fifteen thousand dollars. They're being proactive in withdrawing some of those funds that they have access to, to continue the projects that have, haven't been taken care of, to get those things done. So they're doing a very good job in trying to move ahead with.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
That we fund the balance of the cemetery projects for year twenty nineteen, and the total dollar amount, fifteen hundred dollars out of our maintenance fund.
Second.
And I have no further, any further discussion on that? Here and now, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, the second one is, this is town property, should, we should have a say, say this, or make a motion on that one? Just to make it official on the raffle, I think.
I'll make a motion that we allow the three cemetery signs, the old signs, to be raffled off on March tenth, twenty-twenty. And the proceeds to go to the Dunbarton Cemetery Cremation Garden.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Well, the only thing is, I think you should let people know, these would look very nice in their living room.
Yes.
I think we'll, we'll, we'll put a good spin on it.
All in favor, design a proposal. Aye.
Aye. You had it, we have them hanging in their bathroom, so.
We support you, when it comes to the, the town meeting and stuff, you can probably set up at the, at the town meeting for that. And we support you anyway with, on the hot topics, as needed.
Well, we plan on, you know, once again, I'll use the Dunbarton page, we'll use the town page, stuff like this, let people know that it's coming and.
Someone said if you put bullet holes through the signs, it makes them more valuable.
Well, the east cemetery has that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so.
So we'll see.
We'll see which one draws the most money.
These, these new ones are solid PVC.
Similar to library, I understand.
Yeah, they're nice and heavy, and that compared to these, why, you know, the old ones, it was a lightweight material. So I think we'll get, you know, you shouldn't have any problem with that, so.
Don, I just wanna say thank you, I'm gonna speak for all the segment here, but I think you, you're, the whole cemetery trustee, all cemetery trustees are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I don't think we've seen this much prior, progress in years.
Well, we got a good team, and everybody's been pitching in, Judy Stone has been excellent, and Judy Keith, they've been doing a lot of the research and trying to get the files squared away. So, you know, we each have our expertise, and we're all sharing it, so.
Thank you.
Have you guys got any alternates for your board?
Yeah, Judy Keith is our alternate.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and she's, she's a former trustee at one time, so.
Oh, great.
But.
She's a real asset.
And she drew a lot of the mapping here in the center cemetery.
Yeah.
So she's, she's an art teacher, retired.
We never come to a situation where the entire board is dismantled again, is what I'm trying to avoid, so that's great.
Yeah, but she's, she's very helpful, and her and Judy Stone come down here, and they work during the day, and that, trying to get the files all squared around. And one thing that we're going to do right now, we've got one size fits all for our sales material. And we're gonna have a separate sale piece strictly for Pages Corner, and a separate one strictly for Center Cemetery. And I was mentioning that we wanna raise our prices, and that, and.
But they'd have to come to the select board?
I have to, I'm gonna, I've asked him to research the.
Yeah, we've gotta research what we have to do. But what I plan on doing is, at the town meeting, we're gonna have it set up, so people will know what the prices are and things like this. Because if they bought, you know, down in Massachusetts, five thousand dollars for a grave, and that, we're three hundred and four hundred dollars. So I mean, you know, we're gonna bump a little bit and bump up the cremains garden.
It might be worthwhile just to look at some surrounding towns too, just for comparison reasons.
Well, I've got that, from the association, they did it, they went around and asked everybody.
Okay.
Because some of the municipalities, they got a full-time staff, others are like ours, you know, where it's all contracted out.
Okay.
So, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Don, appreciate it. Any last comments, Dave?
No, thank you very much.
Alright, you did the hard work.
Yeah, yeah, I wish I could go have an iceberg beer about this.
Here's after the meeting. Alright, library update, this is roof raptor update. Liam, what do you have for me now?
We did not receive that.
Okay.
Hopeful email that was.
Hopeful email.
We, he did state that we should have the update for next week.
Okay, excellent.
I did, I did respond back.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
For, for the record, or for the public, we're looking at a, a project which was, went on the back burner, but the roof wrappers in the library need to be augmented. And that is not, we have not lost sight of that, and so we're just still working with a different type of engineer on that. Okay, town business now.
Can we?
No. Let's go right to Greg Miller here.
Oh, yeah, right, you read my mind.
He is here to join us, and I asked him to come in and speak to you one-on-one to discuss the project at the transfer station. Greg, this is Robert, Mike, and Dave, our selectmen.
By the, by the way, you did the work on the gate?
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah, I came along.
Woody was very pleased. He's a tough man to please, and the thing is, if you please him, you're doing good.
I appreciate that.
But I saw you out there painting, I waved to you when I went by, I don't know if you remember, but the thing is, it looked like you did a great job.
I'm, I might have had my.
You did.
Okay, I don't hear much when I got those in.
Alright, but we're talking tonight about proposals to put some guardrails up.
Yeah.
Talk to us, tell us about, you know, you did a lot of work here, we appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I know there's different ideas being tossed around, I've talked to Woody, you know, a couple times, and as far as a cost-effective yet purposeful?
Yes.
System to, you know, um, yeah, I, I, I went with, I started pressing on, what I drew up for you was kinda what I had in my head for a a cost-effective wooden system, a wooden rail system.
Pressure, pressure agreed with you, yeah.
'Cause I started, and then I, just for giggles, we had talked about a metal post and
Right.
cable system, which the cost just, once I started adding up the cost for that, when I got almost double
Okay.
for the cost of the metal and cable system versus what I did there, I honestly, I, that's when I, I mentioned the lean, the, this is the cost of those systems, I just.
Now, my question, would, cost was pretty much materials only, correct? It would be, would you be doing an install, or would you?
I could, yeah, I could, but my, I, I do have, and this is just coming from me, and being quite a number of years in the business, is is the repair aspect of it, the effect of someone damaging it?
Is real.
Is real? And, and being able to get repair parts efficiently and quickly versus doing something like that?
And then when I talked to Greg a little further, and I've heard from other contractors that once you install the, those rails, they're not removable. And I think what the ultimate goal that Woody was looking for was to have something that identified possible trip hazard to alert the resident, but be able to remove it in the case, in, in, you know, whenever it needed to.
My question to you is, so labor's not included, how many, how long would you have to bring in someone to help you, I'm sure you would.
On a cable system?
No, on this system here.
Oh, that, no, I, I'd have that done, honestly, the biggest part of that is drilling, I think there's forty-nine posts, drilling almost two hundred holes in the concrete to anchor the bases.
And then there is a section of the concrete wall that needs to be repaired.
I, I meant to email, I have that in my phone, so you can see it is.
It can be formed and.
Literally, once, three-foot section.
Is crumbled.
Is crumbled.
Yeah, I saw that.
And other.
I'm gonna ask you a question, Greg. What are these, are these all posts showing in this section, I can understand your posts over here.
Yeah, is it okay to?
Yeah, okay, it's gone on. I understand these posts.
Yeah, the X's, none of these were in here until I, this basically, all these measurements are different.
Yeah.
So what I did is, basically, the X's are posts, and just to show you that there wouldn't be two posts with thirty feet in between.
So you're doing four posts there, four here?
Yeah, four here, four here.
Now, what's this here?
This is same thing, posts, that's where this swappy shoppy area is.
The swan shop, yeah.
Swan shop, and this, I'll be honest with you, this area and this area, because that's where that dumpster is, it goes under that building. That and that, 'cause that, when I was there doing other work, I saw, Liam and I talked about it, this sometimes get two or three cars deep. And this is where, you know, you get some foot traffic, and that's a eight foot down to the ground. You know, if, if it's a cost thing, I mean, I, I would think something more visually and purposeful system like this would be important here, 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 and here.
Now, question for you.
Yeah.
This section doesn't need to be removable as this section does, correct?
That's up to you guys, and honestly, I, I, as far as, when I say removable, these posts, the posts really.
Are secured.
The bases are secured, you could unscrew the posts and take the posts out, but once you, once you lag those into the concrete, they're a bear to get out, so.
But you shouldn't have to remove the posts, you're just gonna remove the sections?
Just the sections, yeah, and honestly, none of the posts are, and all of the posts are removable as any other post. All you'd have to do.
It's just unbolt those.
These bases are anchored to the concrete.
What type of bases are you planning on using?
Do they make by Simpson? They're like Simpson Strongties, they're a little, they're like almost a quarter inch steel.
Are you talking about the heavier duty ones, or just the standard?
No, no, they're.
ABA units?
No, they're, they're heavy duty, quarter inch, you're, they're not those like what you put on a deck.
Yeah, okay, that's another one to make sure.
No, these, these are made for that, and you either put three-eighths, I'm not sure which, either three-eighths or half inch.
And then it looks like on your four-by-fours, you're gonna put a cleat on each side to let those remove?
Correct.
And you're talking about you have five-quarter here?
Yeah, this is all five-quarter.
Yeah.
So basically, it's, the height of this would be approximately thirty-two inches, so you get five and a half, 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 five. So people can't literally fall through it, they can't, but these, like you said.
I'd like it to get us to thirty, well, actually, with the, the little bit of concrete we have there, it would be thirty-six inches.
Right.
Off the, off the, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just thirty-two from top of wall. Yeah, this is just thirty-two from top of wall to top of, top rail. And then all the concretes off the, you know, the pavement, twelve inches.
David, I was going to ask though, look at this, do we need it all the way, if you look at, over here is very important, that's where the public interacts. But the thing is, do we need it to go all the way, I mean, all the way down here?
We should, because that's at a higher height there.
Okay.
This is much higher than even over there, it's very high height here.
Yeah, the only one, when I was there measuring, this one starts at, like at this end, it goes like two feet, by the time you're here, you're almost straight at half feet, then you get five meters, you get seven.
Oh, okay, the, the wall or the rail or something.
Leon and I talked about it, if you, if you wanted to do first, each, right where it says it steps down. You know, if you did here and here, now down here, you're five or six feet, that's still a.
We'd like to do until you get down to at least a couple feet, yeah.
You know, that one, even if you did these two, you could do, these two, if you could put a post and a post on each end and then do something like this that I said you could do.
Have you ever installed a wire rail system?
Once, I priced it out twice, the first person said no, because once I priced it out, the costs were just exorbitant. The second one, it was so much more time consuming because there's so many more moving pieces.
When you asked about doing those wire rails and you got that price and you were up to eighty-two, were you pricing it with the aluminum posts with the support posts?
Yeah, it was aluminum, all aluminum posts, and honestly, it's all on the Home Depot website and I went to the Home Depot, because they stock, they don't stock it all, they show it all. You have to order it all in and it's all special order.
For this section myself, I kind of like the wood removable sections, absolutely. But on this section here, I think that those wire rails would be a lot more efficient and you'd go much further between the posts, those support posts, than eight feet if you wanted to as well.
When I installed, I would respectfully like to, if you guys say that's okay, that's fine, I mean, the cable, these cables, just the cables, when I priced that stuff out, I was over, the material list for the system, over half of it was just in cables, because the cable packets, they come maybe, no, that, that being said, those systems are designed so that you have eleven cables in each run, so that's, it's set up like.
Every three inches.
And it can't be removed, and once it's installed, it's there.
And once it's in, it's in.
They just bolt on from the ends, just like anything, you could unbolt them, I guess, if you wanted to.
You could.
On the basis.
On the basis.
No, no, but then this section, you are talking about.
No, this is, this is where, I agree with you.
Yeah, you could, I mean, like I said, there's, there's literally eleven cables between every post and whatever, I mean, I just, just to put that.
I'm not sure with the other selectmen, I think, but what I'd like to do is break this job down into the two sections. So first, where the people are always buy those, on this section here.
Yep.
I would like to get a hard number from you with material and labor to do just that section and then maybe we'll address this section at a later time, maybe provide a second alternative on this section.
Sure.
And on this section here, if you could try and do it in the cables and in the wood.
Yeah.
All right?
Two persons, that's great. Now, Woody's not here, he's on vacation.
I think.
Do you think that we can hold off on making a commitment so that Woody is in agreement with whether he can remove the sections appropriately and it would work for him?
Well, I think we already did that on the sections that he's using the dumpsters at, I mean, these sections over here, we never remove those sections, those dumpsters are fixed, that's what the town brings in and sets in.
Correct, right, right.
You know, there's nobody.
Right.
Those dumpsters are closed on the town, so nobody's dumping it.
I just, I just introduced him to our snow fence over at the library and you and I know how heavy that, that snow fence is and I asked him to look at it to see if it was practical to either cut them into sections, because one person should be able to move that and those things are heavy. The stairs into the basement are not cold, so to have this huge awkward piece that we want to install, we're trying to get him to set those up before snow flies, it might be worthwhile for us to either replace it with a different smaller section, cut them, reuse them, so I don't know whether we're.
Right, we'll go back to this, Bob, do you have any, what's your thoughts?
Well, you know, on the side where the dumpsters are, they use all the time, I mean, at least we could wait for Woody to respond.
Well, that one, he wanted removable ones because Woody asked for those, so if we have him price those removals, we'll have the pricing.
Right, I just don't want them to be too heavy where someone taking them out alone.
In the five-quarter, they won't be.
They won't be?
Not in an eight-foot section.
Okay.
I mean, I honestly, I, the reason I designed that is I have that very set up on the back of my utility trailer, it's like six and a half feet wide, same.
Oh, okay.
Two and three and I just.
So you're talking about having a wooden post, putting a wooden cleat on the post so you can slide them out?
Yeah, basically, if you picture four-by-four cleats would be on the outside edge of each one, you leave about an inch and a quarter space in the middle for these to slide in, slide up, slide down. That way he could grab it with his Bobcat or, like I said, I grab them by myself, I grab mine by myself.
So, and I just wanted to get the pricing rolling on it because.
Right, get the pricing done.
Right.
And. So we know where we are too with pricing.
Yeah, and this one here, and the reason I'm doing that, because if you add the material and labor up, I want to make sure to keep it in an affordable section that we can do instead of trying to do that job all at one time.
Right, sure, all right.
So if we can.
I can have this, if you just want to focus on this, I can, I can have that doing in a couple days.
And these, these railings here, I know, because my office offers them, they do them in two ways, you could do this all in one wire or you can do them in sections and they sell that wire in section kits that actually just have a nut to tighten on them so they're replaceable. But if you did those.
So two options for this side and your option you presented here, we can go with this one with a breakdown of the price?
Sure.
Okay, and this thing is, don't kill yourself, we're not going to make a decision to Mr. Woody's back. And so you get some more time on that, okay?
The only thing I will say, when you just mentioned on the back, just keep in mind, I don't have the exact figures in my head, but I do remember vaguely, this was like nine feet, this was like thirty feet, one of these was like forty feet.
Yeah.
And so each time you step up.
You have longer sections, yeah.
Yeah, so we got a ten-foot section, you got a thirty-foot section, you got a forty-foot section, you got a twenty-six-foot section, so you do have, you know, this one steps out.
They have those on the shelf and all those various lengths down there.
And the concrete, the concrete's going to have to be repaired before he does anything to them.
Yeah, that concrete was, that concrete, I mean, I pointed it out, it was right here. It's just based, two forms and throw it in and trawl it off.
Are you comfortable with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
I was speaking of, is there something we could ask him to fix the front foyer in the library, yeah?
Okay, great job, thank you.
You're talking about just this year, the just little patch ones?
Well, we've been trying to get someone to repair the exterior front foyer.
That's a big job.
That's a large project.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a large project.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to just podge up the little bit that was wrong.
I don't know, I, how dangerous are they?
We're thinking about looking next year to do the.
Yeah, that's.
Big project.
Okay, all right, then we won't waste.
Okay, so, direction from us, where we're going to go?
I'll give you a price on the Bobcat.
Well, I need the transfer station manager here to help us with the decision, we're not going to make it without his input. And so at this point, I think, thank you.
You're welcome, there you go.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
You'll miss it when you get outside.
Oh, yes.
Thanks for coming by. Nothing else, good?
Here, in the mailbox.
In the mailbox.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Liam provided us copies of some warrant articles here, town warrant or what, to defend the tax rate. No, that's, that's, it's coming to that.
So as the board knows, I'm working on getting closer to setting the tax rate and part of those pieces are the state school tax, the county tax, the local school tax, which we already know because of the budget that was passed, and then the town's portion. So they have received all our numbers, they're just waiting on the revised revenues because they have to include that missing number of the rooms and meals tax and they should be pretty close to coming up with the.
Just the cutoff date, this guy's November, what, they have it submitted fully?
No, it's really not, there's no cutoff, but they, the rule goes that if you are going to send out a tax bill, you have to give the resident thirty days notice, so if you are running late and you are sending out your notices November fifth or November fifteenth, then they, their taxes will not be due until thirty days past.
When will you anticipate, this weekend or this week?
I'm hoping tomorrow, Monday or Tuesday, I hear from the DRA and we'll be able to bring something before the board next.
Next week.
Thursday, of course, that point, it's already set, but it gives you a real good idea of.
Okay.
Where our tax rate is, what your surplus is and if there's any other changes that the board.
Now, Bob won't be here next week, so Bob said he would, if he had the numbers, he'll come in and review the numbers and give consensus of if he has shared any concerns he has with us.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can go from there. Thank you, Bob. All right, we got a monthly report from the, next item, from the building and planning, this is for information only, they have some, always, always small contention issues there, just read and be aware of it, no action needed and they clearly stipulated, no action needed on some of the items, so we're not going to go off in a wrong direction here, as we have in the past. Okay, Dave, this is my Bob?
Yeah.
Okay, understood. All right, Bob, this is for you, we have a Dunbar, we have a new, a potential new employee who returns for a new commercial hauler.
No, it's not an employee, it's just we have, we do not have curbside pickup.
Oh, oh.
But we offer names up that provide us with certificates of liability that offer that service to our community.
Okay, so this is a new.
So this is a new person who's licensed, he's got a business in Milford.
But he was potentially a hauler for us in the future.
I will reach out to him because I do have CBL, but anyways, he has just recently opened up a big building in Ware, New Hampshire, so.
Is he going to start looking soliciting for a Dunbar residence?
Well, that's what he's doing, that's the whole purpose of applying, he has to pay a small, a commercial hauler's fee so he can dispose of the residence' trash on Tuesdays at our transfer station and it's always nice to have choices for that service.
All right, so noted. Health Trust, these are, we have to authorize three people to basically speak on behalf of the town when communicating with Health Trust.
Correct, it's a secure website and only authorized users can log in, so I've added one individual within the town and it just basically needs.
Those three, it's basically your office, any problem with that, Jim, outside?
No.
Okay.
It's always good to have backup to be able to communicate things to them, changes and plans or new employees adding that information, cross-training. And on that note, they are scheduled to come with the board, before the board.
You took, you took my next question.
October the first, week of November, I think it's November, because they'll have all their rates at that point and they'll get the, I think it's October seventh that they're scheduled with us.
Okay.
You mean October seventh or November?
No, November seventh, did I say October? I meant November, November seventh.
If we recall last meeting, I kind of alluded to one of the planning board decisions, this is the decision that's been written, just for information only. Planning board, as the property did not meet the zoning, I mean, the zoning requirements, yeah, and so they referred to the zoning board for action. Fred, thank you for the money. We have a copy of the check that they provided.
Oh.
Copy of the check they provided for help claiming the service, Liam.
Jesus, I was crying when I gave it to him.
By the way, you like my invisible panels?
Yeah.
We got some, we got an update on the email, we shared Liam's share, so we know what's going on.
I think it's in your box, there.
Yeah. Okay, Woody did some, was proactive in getting a temporary contract while he's on vacation to essentially.
That's not that.
No, this is, I know.
Okay, yes.
On the transfer station where he's gone, he has a temporary hauler for us.
Yeah.
Now, the next item is the salt for the roads supplier and Jeff is ready to go with it, but he wants to make sure we're good with it, I take it.
So I did make telephone calls to the previous bids on our list, a number, one of them was from Canada, one's from New York, one's from, where, Pennsylvania?
Right.
And so they really come from all over the place, this company here is noted as, what, Portsmouth?
Correct, local.
And the company from Massachusetts is actually the parent company to this and they did quote me over the phone the same price per ton, is that how we buy their salt?
Per ton of bulk salt work. So gentlemen, it's, it appears to be no, is it a price increase from last year?
Nope, same exact price as last year.
We need a vote on this, if we accept it?
I don't know, gentlemen, I don't already.
No, but it's got to go to us.
But the board should make a motion to accept the price.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Granite State Minerals Bank for forty-nine fifty per ton of bulk road salt for the 2019-2020 season, signed off by the road agent.
Any further discussion on this?
On Market Street.
All, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay.
Mike, you're going to sign that last page of that one?
Is this the email that we were, Liam was talking about? Yes.
Yeah.
This is, you've seen it, okay, well.
Did you get to read that, Dave?
I did.
It's exactly what you were, you were looking.
Yeah.
It seems like, just for the public's knowledge, there's some issues with securing the solar panel holders to the ground because of the rocky nature of the substrate, where they sit upon.
Yeah, in his letter, we asked them for an update of why they weren't installing the solar panels and we asked them to come in front of the board and the person that was running the project for the company is no longer running the Dunbar project, they have a new project person, contact point, and it looks like they are getting an engineered stamp on a new design to attach those posts because the boulders are so large there and cannot be drilled or moved and they're paying for that out of their pockets, so that's the reason for the delay.
So I thought it was a great response, finally.
Actually, he's looking for a contractor for that.
Yeah.
According to the, because he got a, he got it signed off by the engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, next item in the pile, we have a, from Cater Stables, they request, it's an application for a sign, about twenty-one square feet, fifty-six by fifty-six. They have examples of it?
You know, the U.S. plan, which is nice.
Yeah. And as I recall, I thought this would have to go back to just the planning and zone, but Liam's correctly. And as I recall, I thought this would have to go back to just the planning and zoning, but Lean's correct me on that.
No, this is a policy of the board's selectmen that, um, uh, new signs go through the whole process. You guys-
If they meet all of our stuff, can't, don't, and, uh, Mike-
Maybe we need to change the policy, cause I did ask her that, and she said that the policy stands right now, that it's the selectmen that approve.
I don't want to see them, if it meets our guidelines, I think we, I've seen the site that they're putting it in.
Okay.
It's all been redone, it's still, it looks good.
Yeah.
Where is it located?
Um, on Montalongo Road, the Cater Stables.
Cater Stables, they just wanna like a granite-
There was a small sign there before Leo, when they, they redid their entryway and upgraded it.
That by Rogers?
Um, no, it's further up across from Gerald de Grania's.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know where it's at.
Did you sign off on it?
There was no signature spot for us that I could see, was there?
So I guess you guys are open to-
Yeah, I'm, I think, we'll only make a formal vote on this.
Who signed that? Oh, the applicant signed it? Oh, maybe that square box down there, Bob, we can sign it.
What would they issue by?
Yeah, we can sign it like as a number.
Well, we'll give it back to the zone, we'll make it, no, no, no.
So if we approve it, permits issued by the, the, uh-
Plane, uh, building department.
Correct, so you approve it and then they'll issue a permit.
So, that's who would get the sign.
I'll make a motion, Bob.
There we go.
Sure.
We'll do that, hold on.
Okay, wait, we have to get on the record, thank you.
Okay.
I gotta tell you a secret.
I'll make the-
It comes in better.
I'll make a motion to accept the application for a sign permit from David Cater and Cater Stables on Montalongo Road, Dunbar, New Hampshire. Looks like the sign meets our town ordinances.
Can I give you a second?
All in favor? Uh, aye. When you push it down, it actually increases the magnification.
Makes your nose look shorter.
Come on, I, I was trained for many years, I just gotta share it with you. Okay, Lean, I'm gonna let you talk to me about, uh, our accountants and auditors.
Okay, so the financial, the audit has been completed. Uh, you can probably expect the, uh, management letter, cause I finalized the, um, last comments and discussed them with the, um, our auditor.
Okay.
Patrick Mohan. Uh, those are being bound as we speak, those are internal, um, recommendations for improvements in our, um, the whole process. What you have before you is our financial statement. This document is used to fill out the five, MS five thirty-five that is submitted to the DRA that we use to set the tax rate. So, um, you can take these home for review. Um, Patrick Mohan is scheduled, uh, meeting with us for October twenty-fourth. So he will be on the agenda to review and, uh, the different sections of the financial report and, uh, answer any questions that you may have. So you wanna take those home?
We've talked about this letter, essentially.
That is technically a generic letter that says, um, that they, I think there's no-
They, they do say one thing, the report isn't solely intended for the information used by the governing body of management.
Correct.
Not intended, and should not be used by any other one other than those specific individuals.
Correct, and that would be, um, specifically for the management letter. This, on the other hand, um, if we apply for grants, bonds, uh, bank, um, increases which we have done for our credit card usage, the banks will request a financial statement. I get this electronically and am able to disperse that when, uh, needed, so.
Very good.
We'll be meeting with him on the twenty-fourth of October.
Davey won't be here, so-
Nope.
If you have any concerns ahead of time.
Okay.
Pass it on to either Dave, uh, either Bob or myself, from our reading, okay?
Do you want me to reschedule it?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll review it if I have any troubles.
Oh yeah, I can give you his number personally too if you want to call him, cause they're very, uh, helpful when you talk to them.
Yeah, in, in fact, anything that you do find, you don't have to talk to us, but Lean could be your, your spokesman for to carry your message forward. Okay, um, I'm almost done. Annual report from Merrimack County, a lot of inserts, they're still taking on money, no problem with that?
No.
They're taking more this year.
Public again?
Yep, public comment.
Okay, I do have one thing.
Okay.
Um, a lot of projects happening tonight, it sounds like.
Uh, small ones.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, I've been wondering, how are we doing with the, uh, grant, the bandstand?
Oh, I haven't even approached that yet. I did contact the gentleman who did the other two, he said yes, he would be interested, but I understand he's very busy, so-
Yeah, they all are, yeah.
Yeah.
But what happens is if you don't keep talking to them, when they have free time, they move on to something else.
It's a good reminder, Leo, if you hadn't thought about it, we've been working on a lot of other ones around that.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, you've got all, you already have that money anyway, so it's not like it's-
What I would recommend if, uh, Lean, if we could get him at least to look at it, bid on it, it can be, the work can be the first year income of the money.
Okay, alright, I'll do that.
Cause, um, it does, that is a pure maintenance issue, and that's exactly what the money's for.
And there's funds for that.
Right.
But even if you got it done this year, you may be able to get it done on line.
Well, as I said, sometimes they run into a, something happens on a couple of projects and they get a little slow time. They can slide in there and do that, but if you don't, if you don't-
If we keep them, if we keep them on the-
Right, if you don't remind them, they'll be doing something else or they'll sit home, which repairing materi, uh, uh, pro, uh, you know, equipment or something, so if they have something, you keep reminding them, they might show up.
Okay.
That's Belkin.
Yes.
Okay, Fred, anything for us?
Yes, um, Fred Mullin, I heard Lean mention before about the basement of the town hall. When we did the corum relation with Goffstown in twenty seventeen, we found the monument on the edge of, uh, timbered silver broken, laying on the ground. So we put it in the basement of the town hall for safekeeping in case they could reuse it to reset the bounds. And they found the bound was twenty-one inches long, it's six by six by twenty-one inches, so it's too short, it'd be flat over the ground.
Okay.
So, um, you're talking about mentioning like raffles and stuff like that, maybe you wanna do something with that? It's engraved D on one side and D, B, uh, G on the other side.
For Dunbar, Goffstown will take it?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I have no problem, I would consider that.
Do we only have a good?
You can cut that.
We don't tell Gofftown about it.
Have they replaced that bound for-
That was the one we did a couple of years ago.
So it's just sitting there collecting dust?
Correct.
Possession's ninety percent.
I'm sure that Don Larson would love to take on the extra auction item or-
Um, I would, I would like to do it for the, um-
Restoration?
Yeah.
Restoration, yeah.
Restoration committee.
Uh, I think that's, that's, that's not tough, because it's, it's tough, restoration is a private, uh, charity, and a private entity. It's nothing related to the town, you really can't give town money to them per se.
The money that they're earning there, they put towards it when they do that, um,
Hmm?
Right, that they earn out there, they put towards it already.
Yeah.
Do you want to put it towards the cemetery?
Well, what, what we could do is just give it, we could give-
Auction it off and then decide when you get the money.
Yeah, you can put it in a general fund.
Yeah.
You can put it in a general fund.
That's right.
Yeah.
And then spend it later.
Uh, one thing, it's not long, but it's heavy, where it took two of us to get it down there.
You wanna ask Don if you include that in the auction? Since we're people bidding, it'd be a nice, a nice venue, if you're able to really give a percentage.
No, just put a picture there and-
Yeah, picture, that's what I'm saying.
And a paper in front explaining.
Yeah.
Wanna do it that way?
Just so that doesn't stay in the basement, cause we've got-
Yeah, I think Fred's spot on, that's, it's doing nothing but just sitting there.
It's no different than our, it's going through our part.
So, if the surveyor says yes, they can reuse it, fine, that's what it was for, that's why it was put there.
Put a note on the other side, if somebody could get a dog, could leash it to that, DOG.
Okay, Fred, thank you for bringing it up, anything else, sir?
Nothing.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, I'll bring it back to the board, but the things that do, any consensus of where we wanna do with that?
We do go through our departments and take a look at what we're not using that's obsolete to bring to the auction. And this would be kinda similar, but we're doing it internally, just offering like our signs that we've sold off the library building, do we wanna-
Yeah, I'd say it'll have to go to the general fund then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, uh-
Ask Don if he could take a picture and include it in his little raffle, but it would not be earmarked-
For the cemetery.
For the cemetery.
That'd be interesting, okay, I think, are we in consensus there, Chuck?
Ask him to get it.
A general direction for now. We'll change, if anything comes up, contrary to what we just decided, we gotta be flexible enough to change it, okay? Alright, I got a couple more things, uh, before I go around the room, I get, um, from the town clerk, I have a list of residents who have failed to obtain licenses for their dogs. And, um, there's, uh, they've asked for warrants be issued to the Dunbar police directing them to issue a civil forfeiture of twenty-five dollars for each unlisted dog. And Chief, uh, Chief is aware that the town clerk is asking, uh, for that action to be taken.
I thought we signed something similar just a short while ago.
But this is seven dogs that remain, everybody else has been-
Remember, we started with a hundred and forty-four, it's down to seven. And, and remember, the thing is, uh, for the record, it's not that we want, it's not, uh, exercising collecting money from, or extracting money from people. It's, it's a, it's a health issue, because it's an assurance that the dogs are immunized against rabies. And that's, to me, that's the biggest, it's a health concern for all residents in town, because people don't follow the leash law down.
But the also, also is if you're gonna charge some, you have, everybody has to pay.
Absolutely, the thing is, it's, it's-
Nobody's above that.
Exactly. So I think it's, alright, so we have, um, there's some documents to sign. And we'll leave it at that, I think we have, they're all, they're all the same.
All the same.
Yeah.
And this is just an instruction, but, no, they're all the same, Bob, no, it's not sign.
You want me to write your name down?
Um, that's alright, I can do it this time. Thanks, Dave. And I just have to say that I think the police department, I listened to how way, uh, he engages people to make it work as far as, uh, making calls and, uh, emails and, he did a good job.
Have we verified the dogs aren't moving? I hate to sign stuff like this, we're gonna get in trouble.
Yeah, that's the last one, that's my guess. You know any of those people?
I do.
Davey, you know, is your name there? Oh my god, yes.
Close it back up, I signed it. Okay. I'm pretty much gonna say Mike made me sign that.
Okay, I wanna take it to, Davey, you were up first.
Well, I went to the, um, Town Hall Restoration Committee meeting. And, um, in there, they decided that they were gonna, um, meet with the architect. And I volunteered with Clumad to go down and meet with the architect, which we met him on this Wednesday at three o'clock to get the preliminary sketches drawn for the, um, entryway to the town hall slash library.
Talking about the rear entrance, correct?
Yes. So, um, that's all I had to update, I placed several calls into Jeff Trexler. And then we had Lean email midweek and we get a response back, and we should hear back on some roof structural information.
I guess we, we did plus up for maintenance, and, uh, if, if we get a, uh, engineering, uh, numbers come in, we can encumber some of the money. That would be the goal, I don't, I don't think we're gonna get the work done this fall.
No, although, you know, winter time is the best time to be up in that attic, so there's a possibility if work slows down, as Leo talked about, maybe if we can encumber the money and get the work done during the winter months, it might be, because it's, they're slow and it's cooler.
Yes, it's gonna go on track, it's gonna depend upon, uh, what it, what it goes, okay, thank you, Dave, stay on top of this.
I have a question related to that, where we're looking to do something with what was never completed in the attic. How's the theater restoration addition going to interfere with that attic, is it, or is it-
It doesn't look like it is gonna interfere, in fact, to draw.
Okay.
So there might be a small valley that comes on there, but we've told them to make that as minimal as possible.
Okay.
So not requiring any additional weight onto that roof.
And hopefully, if it is wood structure, you may be able to sell Cohen back the, uh, steel at loss. But at least you get something out of it.
Yeah, but he did-
Or raffle it off.
Cohen didn't say he'd, uh, if we ever had to re-machine that or-
He'd do it at the cost.
He would do it at the cost, so, so that's an option also.
So that's all I had, Mike, and Bob, to you?
Uh, just one thing, cause we're talking about a rail, a rail system or a system over at, at the transfer station. So need to remember that, I know we got Greg doing all of that work with a price. But if we get to a certain price, we have to get quotes, because, you know, so I just wanted to remind us that, you know, if it gets to a certain level, we need to get quote, whether or not we get other quotes is one thing, but we have to make that attempt.
Okay.
Can, can I make a recommendation that, uh, the thing is, he's doing a lot of scut work with the, um, his time and effort doing the scut work of determining the specifications which we want. Is it worth it to reimburse him for a couple hours of work for the scut work he's doing, or is it, as a contractor, is it some part of the business?
They do that all the time.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, usually like when you're bidding a job, they'll have different guys come in and give them a ballpark number.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that's what they're committed to, cause it could be up or down, but it's close to what the rental bid.
I just know that looking for someone that was able to do all these little things that only required an hour, two hours, he's already been over to the police department to take care of those small issues, the library, the, he's looked at the, the highway garage. It's the handyman that we needed to have on account to be able to do some of those projects that really required immediate attention, but didn't warrant putting out and getting multiple tele, uh, quotes because it was a few hours of work.
I guess I just wanna, uh, limit the, you know, people looking at it like it's the old, good old boy network again. One person gets everything, it's if we get to certain places where we need quotes, we, we have to actually try to get quotes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lean, have something to add to that?
Can I ask a question about that? Can you do it in two phases?
That's what he was already talking about there.
I already split it up.
Yeah, but I mean, so to keep the price down, we do some of the-
Yeah, but either, either phase, Leo, it looks like it might get-
Alright.
A four grade or more.
That's why I split that phase, hoping that we could take care of the side with the dumpsters.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
The sheet.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah.
And the other one, whether we encumber it or, you know, that way it won't put the total up above of hope it's gonna get the work done.
So it looks like it still might.
Right, and there's different levels of bidding, one bid you have to actually advertise and one we can just solicit.
Right, three, uh, telephone quotes.
Right, telephone quotes, and that, that's a little bit faster by splitting, we may be able to do that, to be determined.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, I'm sure this Home Depot provide an, an install for that?
No.
Like if you went through their contractor?
Um, maybe they would, I don't know, for the big competitive, I'm gonna try to.
Okay, anything else, Bob? No, okay.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'll bring it back to, uh, go, Lean, go first, Tom, Mr. Ritter.
I think I've covered everything that you need to know about.
Just for the, Lean's got updated schedules in our boxes, just remember Halloween, we have no meeting on Halloween. Um, and if you're, if the meeting is, if you know ahead of time and you go on the website, if there's something hot, Lean will share something with email, this is a quick decision, and I like to, even if you're gone, you can't vote on it. I would appreciate any input if there's a hot issue, uh, Lean's got a timeframe, we gotta act upon, please, uh, if you respond to her by email or phone call, she calls you, okay? Cause I don't wanna, time is sometimes the essence, and we can't waste time sometimes, but-
Time of the year.
Yeah, but sometimes things can, I'd rather not make a rash decision either.
Correct, yeah.
Alright, um, I'm waiting for a motion, Joe.
Same to you, Joe. Eight twenty-five, I'll second Bob's motion.
All in favor? Alright, you're telling.